Good evening. Welcome to the regular council meeting of March, uh... Six? Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
Ansberry?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Nudis?
Here.
Blue Hardy?
Here.
Cochee?
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of February 21st, 2023. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Janudis, second by Spinks? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Ansberry?
Abstain.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21st, 2023. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Ansberry, second by Smith? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Ansberry?
Abstain.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes. And we have no whole business and no presentation, so reports, Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items I just want to touch on real quickly, give a shout out to our Parks and Recreation Department. They were just recently awarded a $15,000 grant through a division of Coyote County. That'll go towards additional programming, both sports and other program at the helm of the facility. So I just wanted to give them credit, they've been doing a great job down there. As well as, you know, a couple of months ago or a month ago, we did get the mailer that went out from the Parks and Recreation Department, the booklet for the upcoming programs and classes. Most recently, we also sent out a Good Neighbor Guide, and it's something that we've put together over the years. And, you know, frequent questions that come up, helpful phone numbers. Anyone that does not or did not receive a copy, let us know, we have some here, thank you, Mayor. So, good, a lot of helpful, everyday answers to some questions there, so kudos to the staff that worked to put that together. The pool house renovation project, just a quick update, we are on pace to have that completed mid to end of May, prior to the swimming season, so that is going according to schedule. We've also hired a new building commissioner. Our new commissioner will be working to start towards the end of March. We're actually, it was on the news, I want to say, I think it was Cleveland.com recently, Councilman shared, we are working with the city of Brooklyn, and we really, it's been a position that has been hard to fill across Northeast Ohio due to certifications. What we did was we, Brooklyn was in a similar position as we were, and we put our heads together and found out a way to basically consolidate, hire an individual that is going to assist in those managerial duties for both cities. And one, we got an outstanding candidate, which is, he's gonna fit in great. And two, will be, it'll be a cost savings to both the city of Bedford and the city of Brooklyn. So I have to give a quick shout out to former mayor Katie Gallagher. We spoke with her and came up with this plan prior to her leaving to go to, to be a member of County Executive Ronan's Cabinet. And then Mayor Van Kirk, who took over for Katie, you know, was onboard, loved the plan, and we were able to get a great candidate, so our new hire will start end of March. Look forward to having him here. And lastly, I just want to talk about, I know Councilman asked a question the last meeting in February about the rails, the safety, do we have a plan? Yes, we have a plan, and, you know, both our police and fire chiefs, as well as the Office of Emergency Management, and how we would respond to that. But what I did want to add, since the last meeting, Northeast Ohio Association, our mayors and city managers association, obviously have been talking about this topic. We've actually, as an association, drafted correspondence that went to the Federal Rail Administration, but it was also sent to Senator Brown and Senator Vance. There was a congregation of some mayors that were in DC last week. They did provide a copy of that letter to not only both senators, as mentioned, but to others throughout Ohio to talk about, obviously, our concerns. You know, some things that we would like to see, at the very least, we think that communities should be notified when these rail lines are carrying toxic, toxic materials through our communities. What are those materials, how often are they coming through, all of that. I can tell you that on March 1st, and they've acted very, very quickly, and I have to give credit to Senator JD Vance, Senator Sherrod Brown, they did introduce a bipartisan bill. And it would tighten the federal oversight of the rail lines, specifically when it deals with the hazardous material shipping. That act, and that's gonna be discussed in Columbus over the next couple of months, is the Railway Safety Act of 2023, and as I said, it was co-sponsored by both senators. That bill, there's a lot to it, and I'm not gonna touch on every single piece, but it will introduce a number of safety requirements for the trains. There's other requirements in here, and the last thing is actually something I'm very excited to see. But it touches on the requirements of train lengths, train weight, what the route, analysis of all of the routes, speed restrictions, and then the last item that they touched on is eliminating the blocked crossings from train delays and train stoppages. And, you know, I hope that this gets streamlined and passed, and I just wanted to kind of expand on what we talked about at the last meeting, that we have, you know, our response and what our response would be. And then, obviously, we would rely on, you know, the Office of Emergency Management, and then, you know, mutual aid, as well as our, obviously, our fire and police. But it is good to see that some of these concerns are getting pushed through, through this bipartisan bill, and hopefully it does get passed, and there's some improvements in that regard, so I just wanted to touch on that. And it's, you know, one of the benefits too of working with colleagues, and Mayor Cochee is very involved with the Mayors and Managers Association, you bounce ideas off of one another, and when there's an issue like this that happens, to ensure that we can work together. And, you know, just one of us sending a correspondence to Columbus for our senators, you want to hope it makes a difference, but when you have all of the mayors and city managers from Northeast Ohio sending that correspondence, it carries a lot more weight, and, you know, hopefully things get pushed through pretty quickly, so, had a report.
Yeah, that can't happen quickly enough because Northfield Southern had another derailment down by Columbus, so... Fortunately, it wasn't as catastrophic as what Palestine was. Hopefully get that pushed together quickly. Mr. Montello?
We have no reports, just thank you all for coming, and have a happy St. Patrick's Day for all you Irishmen out there.
Ms. Howland?
I have no report this evening.
Mr. Smith, would you like to start us off?
No report. Thanks for coming.
Mr. Ansberry?
All right, I'll do it. Thank you, Mayor. Seeing as I missed the last meeting because I was a little under the weather, I missed the opportunity to congratulate Officer Kemsky, who got promoted to sergeant. Fantastic choice. And also, I wasn't here to wish Eagle Scout Joshua Armstrong congratulations. Very impressive young man, I got to sit down with him, I believe it was early spring of last year. We had just some discussions about, you know, his path and what he's been through, because I also went through Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts here in Bedford way back in the day. And again, congratulations to both of them. Couple words in Bedford Downtown Alliance, we'd like to thank everybody that contributed and made the mitten fence a big success this year. It went up late November, and we just took it down, I believe, last Thursday. Thank you to everybody that donated, all the people that actually knitted things, it was a big help, and that will be going up again in November this year. And same today, the fifth annual Chocolate Walk will be May 13th, Saturday, May 13th. Mike Burey, I just wanted to get it on record, the lines that are down on Maple Dale, those are spectrum lines, I know it looks bad, we've been looking at it for about a month or so now. We have contacted them and trying to get them to clean up this mess. I guess isn't the easiest to deal with, but we're gonna pursue that and try and get that cleaned up. The Good Neighbor Guide, Mike, if I can get a handful of those, there's some residents that haven't gotten them. And just a couple of personal notes, my older son Sean turns 30 tomorrow. I'm not that old, but he's gonna be 30 tomorrow, so happy birthday, bud. My wife also turns a little over 30 on Wednesday, so happy birthday to her. And I will be a grandpa again come September, so thank you to my daughter, love you guys, thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes. First, I want to thank Mike for pursuing the railroad fiasco that's been going on in this state here. And actually, it's not just our state, it's others too. It's good to see that action is starting to be taken. I'm worried that a lot of what the state is proposing in this new bill, which I read a lot of it myself, is gonna get trumped by the federal government, because technically, the rails are the responsibility of the federal government, and whether you can regulate them to any degree is still questionable. But it's good to see some action, because then the railroads know that they're being watched. And I hate to say it, the bigger you get, the more you need to be watched, because you're gonna try to get away with things. So I'm glad to hear that they're looking at the actual length of trains, because these trains are getting so long that you can sit at a crossing for 15 minutes, because there's 200 and some odd cars on some of these trains. So they're, they're saving money by doing that supposedly, and you really begin to wonder, because they're wearing the wheels, they're wearing the track, they're wearing everything out so much quicker because of the weights and everything that's being pulled across it, so... Let's hope we don't have another disaster like we did over in East Palestine, even though Springfield had theirs this weekend, they didn't have any hazardous waste on it, but it still took 20 cars off the track, so... 20 cars in our area could be disastrous, even though there's a lot of area that isn't directly impacted, because they have a lot of right of way through here because of all the railroads that don't exist anymore. But it still would be a hazard, and if it tied up our crossings, it cuts the city in half. So it is definitely a factor in this town, so I'm glad to hear that things are moving forward. In any case, there recently, there have been a lot more people who have been putting their rubbish out on Friday. More and more areas, at least in my ward, it seems like, especially along Northfield Road, there's a couple there that have been there all weekend now too. One of them, it looks like they emptied the house and dumped it, there, there was a whole traffic jam over there earlier today, because people were stopping on the road and going through it all. So we need to have, I don't know if it's the auxiliary that goes around, or whether the police, when they go around on their duties on the weekends, that we need to somehow inform these people that you can't put your trash out until the day before Rubbish Day. And since the rubbish day is either Tuesday or Wednesday, that means Monday or Tuesday. So not Friday or Saturday, so, because animals get into it and everything else, so... That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Let's see, we're starting off with Mike, you've already heard this complaint, but the speeding on Greencroft is getting, I probably got most about seven calls this weekend. Of course, what's happens, and several cars, I guess, are speeding so fast that they lose control. We've had a couple of residents that had cars go up in their lawn, their tree lawn, their lawn. And the bad part about that, and when that happens, and it happens in the middle of the night, and you get up, you hear it, and then you get up, you have no license plate, so what are you gonna do? Are you gonna call the police? Why are you gonna call the police? I mean, they're gonna see the ruts, but they're in your yard, but what are they gonna do? But what's bad is this little lady that takes such good care of her yard now has these huge ruts. And she's responsible now for fixing that. And it's happening more and more, last weekend, two phone calls. Greencroft's bad this morning, when I was out doing, I do my routes on my way to Go teacha in Shaker. And I usually stop every morning, because there's always, I must have picked up three bags of liquor bottles, Patron, Wild Turkey, the good, some good stuff, a couple bottles I have with, I'm thinking, okay, if they're throwing these out their windows, so what does this mean? They're, they're driving and drinking. Then you have to clean all that, while I'm, while I'm there, here comes, and I'm standing right in front of this big, huge sign, which thank you, Mike, for making sure they're all over the place, of no trucks. It's big, you can't miss it. Here comes this big 18-wheeler, almost put up in Mercedes, their side lot on Greencroft. And I'm, of course, out there pointing to the sign, he was very nice, he did stop, and he goes, "Well, where else am I gonna make a delivery?" And I said, "Where are you gonna go? This is a dead-end street, where are you gonna turn around?" He was very nice, and he had to really kind of maneuver, stop traffic, again, you know, we're gonna call the police on that, what are they gonna do? So I don't know what we can do about this, it's things like that. And then, the simple fact of this last Saturday, a car on the intersection of, and this has happened several times. One of us ended up in our planning, vision's, our president, Helen Briggs, almost ended up in our house. Someone, when you come down the grand, then you've got Bexley, and you've got Southwick, and they come flying through that, and if there's a little hump there, if they fall asleep, or I guess what happened is the person fell asleep behind the wheel, well, they just went right through the stop sign and went right up in Helen and them's yard. And that's a scary thing, to hear this big boop at 3:00 in the morning. Of course, the guys got him, our guys did a wonderful job. Last weekend, on the other side of the road, she hears a big boop, this is 2:00 in the morning. But this one did, they got hung up on the curb, but the time they called the police to get there, and our guys responded very quickly, they were gone. Now there's great big ruts on that law. If you drive over where you're seeing a lot, so I don't, I don't know what the solution is to it. If we can ask our guys to please maybe pay a little bit more attention to that area. I'm sure it's not just my ward, I'm sure it's other wards too, that they go flying down. I know they go flying down Willman too, because I almost got hit the other day on Willman. Picking up some stuff. But yeah, the trash, it concerns me with, with people, with that amount of alcohol bottles being out and picking them up. So it's very concerning, I don't know what we're gonna do about it. Big trucks, again, I took pictures, Mike, of the company and stuff that I will give to you. I was not here on, at the council meeting when there was discussion of chickens, of backyard chickens, and it was on our work session tonight, and I'm first gonna put on my, I'm a resident, and I'm a farm girl, I'm a very proud, loving, and raising on a farm. And I have a love for animals, I have a big spot for chickens. Anybody that's been in my house, I have chickens and roosters on my curtains, in my living room. There's big roosters all over the place. I like them, they're farm animals. Now I'm gonna put on, and like I said, I have fond memories, we, we had two great big yard, chicken yards. One side was for the laying eggs, we sold eggs, fresh eggs in our grocery store, my dad's grocery store. And one thing, I don't think y'all have up here back home, we had chicken snakes. So that was kind of traumatizing for a little kid, when you went out there and you picked your hand in there to get fresh eggs, and you pulled out something slimy, and it was a big old chicken snake that already eaten one of the baby chickens and several eggs and stuff. So those are the memories that are not fond. But I personally, and I'm gonna put on my council hat, I personally have only had two emails that I received of people wanting chickens, that's me, I'm speaking, I'm speaking for me, Councilwoman Spinks, this is me, this is what I feel. They don't live in my ward, I asked several of people in my ward, most of them was like, "No, because we've already have so much with the deer, and with the problem with the deer, you know, people feeding the deer, and we have rules against that, and people, you know, they keep breaking them." My, my feeling on it, they are farm animals, and we, most of our lots here are small, they're not real big. I'm on several different boards, I'm on NOCA, very proud board member, have been, Don was involved with NOCA, and it's a, it's a Northeast Ohio City Council Association. And so I sat on the board with several, like Strongsville, Westlake, Karma, all over the place. And had some discussion, and Vic, he goes to some of the forums with me and stuff, and so he can network, and we all, we have weekly meetings, and was talking to the Garfield mayor, and a friend of mine had a sit-down conversation with him too. And so they have permits and stuff, but with permits, what they're finding is the people that they're having trouble with, they're not getting permits, they're just getting the chickens, and they're just putting them in their backyard. Then there becomes a whole other problem to it. So it's, it's, it's a bigger problem, we are a city of over 13,000, and I believe everybody has the right, whether they want something or not, everybody has, you know, the right to decide. I personally, this again, is just me personally, I hate to see chickens, which are funny creatures, they have personalities, they don't have teeth, they know, they, they're not like a dog, they don't bark, they don't fight, but they do like to scratch, they do like to, you know, roost, and they, they will fight with each other. And if they're in, they do get stressed out, they're not, they don't make good house pets. I've tried, when I was young, they like to scratch, and they poop, and one thing, being raised on a farm, it is good fertilizer, but it's also full of parasites, it's also full of a lot of contaminations and stuff. So in order to use it as a fertilizer, you have to compost it, okay? So when you compost it, most I see some of my garden club ladies out there, we know all about, and well, you know that compost, what do you get when you compost? You get skunks, you get other things. There's other creatures that, that love chicken feed, so there's more that goes into it than just putting a couple chickens out in the backyard or building a coop. I hate small, tiny coops. I have friends that have chickens, I get my chicken fixed by going, they have chicken yards, they have a farm, those chickens are healthy, they have big, they're protected. We've got big, huge hawks right now, got a phone call last week, lady was out walking her dog, and the hawk scooped down right in front of her to grab her dog. Well, you know, it's just, again, my opinion, our building department is already stressed. We have one, we're getting another commissioner, but we're gonna share him. So who's gonna enforce this? If we can't keep people from driving drunk, you know, going over someone's lawn, possibly hitting their house, mattresses out that aren't covered, and then they stay out for weeks, our trash cans out for weeks, people parking in their lawn, people not taking care of their house, going to court, and then they're giving this and that. And that's another thing, what's, where's all this going to go? Again, this is just my opinion, as a farm girl, as a resident. I think farm animals belong on a farm where they can have plenty of space and be healthy. And I have friends that sell eggs, that own farms, and that's their livelihood. So I just think that farm animals need to remain on farms in the discussion. A report.
Thank you. Mr. Janudis?
Thank you.
No report. Mr. Blue Hardy? I just got one, Mike, is there an update on that signage that's supposed to go up on Union Street?
Yeah, they, they installed the, the first sign, the second sign where it was installed, they gotta get a pole that is stronger to reinforce it, because that solar piece, there's also a battery behind that, so the solar charges the battery, so it doesn't go out. It was up for about a day, we removed it, and we're waiting on that other pole to come in, and we'll have that second one up, but the first one is up.
Also, Northfield Road Bridge, we have a date when they're actually starting in?
I don't have a, a start date yet, but as soon as we get that, there's gonna be a pre-con meeting, that, when that, that'll be determined, and then we'll have more specifics as far as traffic control and all of that, and I'll share that information at the meeting shortly after, and I'll also put that information in Council's weekly memo.
End of report. Thank you. Let's move on with the new business. Resolution number 2598-23.
Which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with 890 Broadway LLC for the purchase of permanent parcel number 812-15-004, and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Ansberry. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Ansberry?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Blue Hardy, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This property has been vacant since the practice was sold, this is the former Padala Building at Union and Broadway. We've had conversations with the property owner, came to a agreeable price of $90,000. We did go through and inspect the property. Our plan is, we, you know, we own the majority of the property in the surrounding, across the street, Broadway and Union, as well as the former Moon Glow site, being able to control this for future development is, I think, important, especially for the agreed-upon price. Long term, that may come down, or it may be used in some form of attracting the business. Short term, we would use it for potential meeting space for community groups, or potentially a police mini-station at that site. We will work to get it cleaned up, landscape, things that's going to collect it for some time.
Good, that's a good thing. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Ansberry?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 18-23.
Authorizing and ratifying a contract with National Pump and Process Inc. for repairs to the tower in Fluent to the tower and fluent pump at the wastewater treatment plant, and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Saunders, second by Asbury. Mike?
Mayor, in December, we passed legislation to remove the, our tower, the affluent pumps has stayed in the ordinance. They were failing, so there was one ordinance to cover the cost of all that. We weren't sure what ultimate repair cost would be. What we wanted to do was utilize the, a number of the parts from the existing and see what we can do to rebuild. This is the final bill from that rebuild. When we did receive the initial quotes of the removal, the national pump and process was the cheaper. This final repair will be for $29,460.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-23.
Authorizing the city to, the city manager to enter into a contract with Best Equipment Company for the purchase of an Embro site Rover X-Basic System with an integrated lift for the service department, and declaring an emergency.
In simpler terms, it's a camera to check down the sewers and other places. Very needed piece of equipment. We want to put this on first reading, but Mike, do you want to give an explanation here?
Yes, this is for, we do have a smaller camera to allow for some, on some of the smaller residential lines. We do not have the ability to televise and analyze the main sewer lines throughout the community. In the past, we have always contracted with a private contractor to do that, costing the city money to help us identify blockage or, you know, annual maintenance on areas that we need to focus on, or we have relied on Cuyahoga County. Cuyahoga County does provide that service, but they provide it to all communities. So sometimes you're in line, sometimes you're waiting. What we did is we went through, we've discussed this for the last few years of purchasing this, we did put it on the budget for the wastewater sewer plant, or wastewater budget last fall, we included it in. It is a budgeted item, and we'd like to go ahead and make that purchase.
I have a motion to put it on first reading, by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 20-23.
An ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the city of Bedford and 14735 Holdings LLC, doing business as Cleveland Tank and Supply, located at 15 Hemisphere Way, consisting of five point acres of permanent parcel 814-07-001, and authorizing execution of that agreement, and declaring an emergency.
Again, we want to put this on first reading, but Mike, can we give an explanation first?
Yes, this is a, we received tax abatement application from Cleveland Tank and Supply there, the company that is planning to relocate from Cleveland to Bedford, with their employees, ultimately increasing their employees over the next few years, over 60. They fabricate tanks for school buses, fire departments, both diesel gasoline tanks as well as hydraulic tanks. They will be constructing a roughly 60,000 square foot facility in Tinker Street Commerce Park.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, they applied for the, it was a 10-year, 70% tax abatement. This tax abatement will, being that it's a brownfield, they are, they do have the ability to apply for state, state abatement, which it could increase that, but they're sticking to the local tax abatement, which is less, which is a 70%. And this would have to go in front of the Bedford City School, School Board for approval as well.
I have a motion for first reading, Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-23.
Similar to 20, an ordinance approving an amendment to the community reinvestment area, whoops, not an amendment, I'm sorry, an ordinance approving a community reinvestment agreement between the city, the city of Bedford and Lake Shore Electric Corporation, located at 5 Hemisphere Way, consisting of 7.46 acres of permanent parcel number 814-07-001, and authorizing execution of that agreement, and declaring an emergency.
Again, it's our wish to put that on first reading, so Mike, it's pretty much the same.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. This is also, we received an application from Lake Shore Electric, which is in Bedford, they're located on Willis right now, they leased that facility. They are planning to expand significantly and construct a building up to 110,000 square feet. Their employment numbers are in the 40s right now. Over the next few years, that number will be close to 100. So they are expanding their employment, and they submitted for a 10-year, 70% tax abatement on the construction of that new facility. This will also have to go in front of the Bedford City School, or Bedford City School Board for approval as well.
Thank you. Motion for first reading, by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-23.
An ordinance to levy assessments for delinquent water bills in the city of Bedford, and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Smith, second by Asbury. Mike, or then who wants to give this?
So this is a ordinance to approve delinquent assessments to go on tax bills for various properties within the city who have not paid their bill for more than 60 days. A lot of times this is repeat offenders, but this, with this assessment, it's mounting up to $25,146, 31 cents. To pass this, we need assessments of tax bills.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And now we come to a hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
I just wanted to say thank you, Councilwoman Spinks, for your pros and cons about chickens. You gave every thought and angle that I could possibly think of as well. I believe in supporting local farmers, and I love fresh eggs, but I believe in supporting local farmers too, so. And Mike, thank you so much for talking about trains. You know why I live very close to them? I was wondering if we could put that as a topic for discussion when we come to our award meeting? That'd be great. I told my friends that if anything were to happen, I'll be knocking on their door. I also wanted to say, I love the recreation department, they are a gem to the city. I love going there. The building is so fresh and clean, and it's really, the number of people are increasing, and they're doing a wonderful job. And another gem to our city is the Bedford Garden Club. And I'm the new president this year. I don't know, that might be, yeah, well, we'll see how many great years I get. Well, so we're having our first meeting on the 16th, a Thursday of March, at 7:00. We'll have our membership registration at 6:30. And I have some partners here with me, if any of you care to become a member. I'm looking this year to push active members. I mean, it's great to have 130 people in our garden club, but you know how it goes. So I'm pushing leadership, developing leadership, and becoming more active and taking ownership of the club. So I want to see us get to 100 years. We're very close, very close. And we're having a plant sale this year, our 35th annual plant sale, that will be in May, and so more information will be coming out. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Pillar, and I live at 96 Tower Bell Avenue, Bedford, Ohio. Ward 6. I came here tonight specifically because I want to share an experience of mine with you. When I was growing up in Wisconsin, which is a farming community, generally speaking, my family built their home in a new area, because the city was moving toward that area, next to a family, a wonderful family, who had chickens in their backyard. This was attached to their garage, so they were not free-range, like you had on farms. I also, because we were good neighbors, got to take care of the chickens when they went on vacation, which I didn't enjoy, but it was part of being in the neighborhood. One thing that I want to share with you is if you've never lived near chickens, and you have a lot of moisture, like heavy dew or after rainfall, it stinks. And I live in a relatively small, I live in a relatively small lot, and I don't want my neighbors on either side of me, either one of them, to have chickens, because after it rains, and I want to go out and work in my yard, because it's easier to pull the weeds, I'm gonna smell those chickens and their poop. The chickens are probably less than the poop. So when you come to make a decision, I agree, I love fresh eggs, I think the animals belong in a farm or an area that can support them. My street, my neighborhood, my lot can't. So please give that some consideration when you make a decision, Mr. Saunders.
Yes, I know, you're the only one that has said that.
Mary Baldwin, 124 Garden Street, Ward 6. Sarah asked me to come tonight to speak about the chicken issue, and I said, but I believe the opposite of what you believe, and she said, come anyway. So, thank you for the flexibility. I've had two homes in Bedford, both of those have had very deep yards, and in one of those cases, my neighbor had chickens, and I found out about it one day, because I walked back there and there were chickens walking around. Didn't smell them, didn't hear them, didn't know otherwise. So I guess I don't really have a problem with it, although I can understand in smaller yards where it would be. I wonder if there's some consideration in terms of looking at distance, and, you know, having that play into the decision. And also, I would also recommend no roosters, they are noisy. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Betsy Lee, 76 Palmetto. Not sure what ward I'm in right now.
You don't know either.
You're in Ward 5.
No. Anyway, I also, the director of the Bedford Historical Society, we're having our reverse raffle on March 18th. We have tickets, Sandy has a flyer there, she also has tickets. And we also, on the 11th, we're having a speaker series. Janet Caldwell and one of the sisters from the convent are coming to talk about the history of the old convent.
Thank you. Same done, and motion for adjournment, Saunders, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.